I guess we should start by saying, and then say our pledge. To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
As we begin our meeting, I'd just like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded, as all our other board meetings are. Okay, we're beginning tonight with a budget workshop session. So I will turn it over to Dr. Egan to present the budget work session.
All right, good evening, everybody. Give me a minute, I'm just gonna share my screen and pull up our budget information. Okay. So, we last left off with the budget in April. On or about April 1st, the Governor and the Department of Budget released state aid information for school districts, and we began bringing our budget to closure. Typically, by this time of year, we would have adopted our budget already and been moving forward for a budget vote next week. But we know, everything has been a little delayed. And we know the budget vote is now going to be on June 9th. I'll come back to that in a little bit. But we thought that it would be good to do a quick run-through of the budget, where we are, and have some discussions relative to that. So, we begin our budget process a little earlier than most districts. We began back in December. We had meetings on December 17th, January 21st, February 11th, March 10th, and then March 24th. Again, we got our final, initial final state aid figures on or about April 1st. And today, this is what we're looking at for next year. Our proposed budget, which, actually, this is a typo, it should be 2021. Proposed budget is about $96.5 million. 2.8% budget-to-budget increase. The tax levy increase is 3.27. And this is a balanced budget. This budget is slightly lower than the budget we last presented in April. The one difference, and I can go into a little bit more detail later, is we last proposed a levy increase of 3.51. That included three large buses and two smaller buses. The current budget includes two large buses and one smaller bus, which is a capital expense, which brings the levy down slightly to 3.27. Other than that, everything that was in the proposed budget the last time we talked about is still there. We just reduced the number of buses that we intend to purchase for next year. This budget currently supports everything that we currently have in our 1920 budget in terms of curriculum, programs for students, extracurriculars, music, the arts, sports. It also includes some really important technology enhancements. We had a multi-year Chromebook initiative, which for this past year, we implemented grade 8. Next year, we were going to add two grades, but we've expedited that in light of our current condition. So next year, we anticipate going 1:1 in grades 7 through 12, which is very, very well needed and in keeping with the times that we're looking at today. Our current budget includes some safety and security upgrades for us. We're going to be able to finish off our vestibules at the elementary schools. Again, we're still purchasing some buses, just a few less than we initially thought we were going to. And our tax levy increase is still within our legal tax cap limit. The curveball that we're currently dealing with is that the aid package that we received on April 1st may not be, and probably won't be, the final aid package. So, the Governor in the budget placed four adjustment periods. The first adjustment period ended on April 30th. The second adjustment period wouldn't end until the end of June. But the Governor has also indicated that on or before this Friday, he plans on getting back to the budget once again and adjusting our aid package and aid packages for all the school districts across New York. I know I don't just speak for myself when, I don't think we have any idea what the Governor is going to come back with us with on Friday. Many, many organizations are telling us that we should anticipate at least a 10% cut in foundation aid, which would be roughly about $1 million. And we have been planning for something of that magnitude. But we're going to have to sit and wait and see what in fact we hear from the Governor this Friday, if anything. So here's where we currently are. We've pretty much kept that gold bar where it's been for the last couple of months. The only thing, again, that we tinkered with was we cut a large bus and two small buses out of the budget, so that gold bar got a little smaller. And over on the right is where we build our revenue to pay for the gold bar. Now, here's where it's important, and unfortunately, you can't see my mannerisms, but if the blue box comes back slightly lower and we can't increase the levy, that green box anymore, you have two options. Either grow the yellow box, or shrink the gold box. Because in the end, we still need to be balanced. So one of the things that we will look at after we get information from the Governor is ways that we can, we would potentially reduce the gold bar or what's in the budget, or grow the other revenue section on the lower right. The lower right, in this case, would probably represent any fund balance or reserve that we may decide to put towards the budget. And the gold bar, again, would simply be things that we would scalpel off of the budget that maybe we feel we could do without and bring our budget to fruition. So just looking at our revenue projections real quick. We're currently predicting, you know, we get about $19 million in money from the state in total. About $11 million of that is foundation aid, which is where I came up with that million or 1.1 million that potentially we might need to cut and think about that gap closing, depending on what the Governor tells us on Friday. And you'll see that, again, this column is our projected budget. We're already including some debt service reserve, 395,000, 100,000 in ERS reserve, 75,000 in workers' comp reserve, and almost 2.3 million in fund balance to this budget. And that, those would represent that gold, that gold box at the bottom that I was talking about in a little bit. So we're already contributing fund balance and reserve to next year's budget. So again, depending on what we hear from the Governor on Friday, we'll have to go back and look at our revenue projections as well as expenditures that are in the budget. If we look at our historic budget, going back to 1213, which was the first year of the tax cap, 3.5% was the highest levy increase we've had in recent history. So 3.27 is certainly less than 3.5. But you'll also see, we've had years where, like 1617, where the levy increase was 1.2%. When you look at the average taxpayer who pays approximately $9,000 in school district tax, school district tax is roughly 2/3 of the tax bill. We're looking at an estimated increase of just under $300 for the 2021 school year. The contingent budget, if our budget should fail twice, is a heavy hit. It's about a $2.3 million cut that would need to be made. That's a little bit more than 20% of our foundation aid, which would be pretty sizable. Of course, we hope that that doesn't happen, and we hope that the community does support our budget. So, a couple of really important dates. So, by executive order of the Governor, the budget vote is going to be on June 9th, but will be 100% by absentee ballot. Now, you know, complete disclosure, every major educational organization in the state lobbied against this particular option, simply because of the many logistics and really expense that goes into making that happen. So, we're looking at, hopefully, having enough information where we can adopt a budget at a special meeting that is actually on tonight's agenda, that we're going to schedule for May 18th, which is Monday. Following that meeting, assuming we're able to adopt the budget, the final budget number needs to go in the absentee ballot. Whatever that 96-point, whatever million-dollar number is, needs to go into the absentee ballot before we get ballots printed. The ballots then go to print and get mailed to our residents, who then need to complete their absentee ballot and either put it back in the mail, so it is received by 5:00 PM on June 9th, or we're giving residents the option that they can drop it in a lockbox here at the San Remo Administrative Building on June 9th, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Either way, all absentee ballots, and you know, understand we're mailing out probably between 16,000 and 17,000 absentee ballots at a significant expense for printing, and we're liable for return postage, which will be provided in that mailing for our residents. It's important that all ballots need to be received by 5:00 PM on June 9th. Any ballots that come in after 5:00 PM on June 9th cannot be counted. The meetings with asterisks, we will be running via Zoom video conference, just like this meeting tonight. Sorry, my phone's ringing. Some additional important information. Everything that you see on this slide tonight, I believe, is included in a postcard, which was also in an executive order that went out to parents in the mail today. So residents should be receiving this postcard in both English and Spanish, because we are legally obligated to provide everything in both languages. The important thing here is that, hold on, that typically... Hold on, there we go. Typically, we would do registration for voters in district. Unfortunately, given the health and safety precautions that we're in right now, we are not permitted and we can't do voter registration on campus. But the Department of Motor Vehicles will be happy to accept any resident that would like to register to vote on their website. It's just important that people do that before May 26th. Otherwise, they won't have the ability to participate in this particular election. If you're unsure if you're a qualified voter or not, there's some contact information for Mrs. Capabianco, our district clerk. You can email her, you can call her. She's got voicemail, and she'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. And that is the end of our budget update for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Egan. I know you had mentioned possible other budget cuts that Governor Cuomo is projecting throughout the year. I just want to say, I know the Board is working with you in making sure that the cuts that we have to make do not directly affect children with their educational. So that, I just want to stress out that the budget, we're still very much keeping all our programs for our children. We looked at class size, we're maintaining that. We are really trying to work, well, we have to work with the Governor, but making sure the cuts we make do not directly affect our children. So, anybody else would like to say anything?
Yeah, I'd just like to emphasize that the voting must take place by 5:00 on June 9th, so there's no mistake about that, which is four hours earlier than our normal closing time. But then...
And Kevin, if they're mailing them in, they have to be received, so it's really, it's really well before that.
Yep, they have to be received by that time. So it's going to work out with the post office. Second, there's the possibility then that if we get a certain amount in cuts, and then we develop a new budget, then does the contingency number change based on that? I'm just curious about that. If the budget doesn't pass twice, which I hope does, you know, I hope it does pass. The numbers that you showed, in other words, Dr. Egan, were based on what we anticipate as of now. And I'm just wondering, how does that change based on...
The contingent budget number would remain the same, because the contingent budget is keeping the tax levy at a flat amount from the prior year. So that contingent number that was on the presentation, that would stay the same. We just, if the cuts, the proposed number would come down.
Right, okay, thank you.
The thing that I think you might have been alluding to, to Mr. Johnson, is even if we get through whatever the Governor comes back with us with on Friday, there are still two more potential adjustment periods during the school year, which is something we need to be a little mindful of. So, you know, if any of us were around in 1990, 1991, you know, when Governor Cuomo I enacted some mid-year cuts, you know, that's just something that's going to weigh on us for the next couple of months. But, you know, right now, and I think Mr. Ford put it really well, we've taken a very careful scalpel to the budget, and, you know, we hope we can meet whatever the Governor releases on Friday. You know, but we're going to, the devil's always in the details, so we're going to throw ourselves into figuring that out. And then, we have a fairly short turnaround, so that, again, we can get the ballots printed, get that mailing prepared, get it mailed out, and then our residents have the ability to mail it back to us again. So it's a little bit of, you know, beat the clock, so to speak.
Yeah, and I guess the only, you know, it's kind of been said, but you know, the point too, is as we think through all those things, and as you said, Dr. Egan, have a short timeframe to turn around from whatever news we get on Friday to move forward and approve the final budget. Being mindful that we could have mid-year budget cuts. Being mindful that, unfortunately, it's quite likely that 2122, from a state aid perspective, is even worse, because you're looking at latest economic forecast, probably at least two quarters of the state fiscal year that will be in significant distress from an economic and tax receipts perspective. And so, you know, there's a real concern that, you know, whatever cuts you get this year will remain, and possibly or most likely be even more. And so, we need to be prepared to, we need to have a budget that's flexible to meet mid-year cuts without, as Pam said, without impacting or with as minimal impact as possible to students and programs. But we also can't just spend our way out of the problem with reserves, because this is not going to be a one-year problem. And we're going to need those reserves probably for the next couple of years.
Me and shaking her head.
But certainly for next year, and so that, because that's a question we'll often get. You know, we have these rainy day funds and reserves, and that's exactly what they're for. And as you said, we're tapping a bit already. But we need, unfortunately, this rainstorm is going to last for a while. It's not a rainy day, but it's probably a rainy couple of years, and we need to make sure that what we have, we can spread out so that we do mitigate any potential impact to the kids and the programs over that longer-term period of time.
Anybody else? Can everybody just mute their mics if they're not talking, for less feedback? Okay, thank you. Okay, on to public comments. The Board of Education will hear public comments that address voting items on tonight's agenda only at this time. Speakers must first identify themselves to the district clerk and then address their concerns to the Board. Comments by individuals may not exceed three minutes due to confidentiality concerns. The Board does not permit speakers to raise issues concerning a specific student or a specific personnel matter. Such concerns should be presented to the superintendent after the Board meeting.
And Pam, I would assume, I don't know that that was officially a budget workshop, but if people had comments on the budget presentation that Dr. Egan just did, we'd take those now, too.
Right, that's what I had asked if anybody, oh, and I said if anybody had questions, but I didn't see anybody, yeah. A good point. Anybody else? Okay. Any public comments for tonight's voting items? Okay. Okay, I'll go on. I'll go on to the approval, the first consent agenda. Excuse me, I just need to get my dog, excuse me. Okay, I'll go on to the first consent agenda. The approval of minutes of the April 7th regular board meeting and the April 28th BOSI's budget vote and election. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kevin, there you go.
I'm sorry, I was muted, aye.
Okay. Okay, moving on to new business voting, personnel schedule, Mr. Craig?
Good evening, everyone. On tonight's personnel schedule, we just have the appointment of Ms. Allison Fox, who will leave replacing for Catherine Valente, who had her baby last month. And we have recommendations for extended school year by Dr. Paulby. So this is for a extended school year program, which will be given through distance learn. And that's the personnel schedule.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, on to the acceptance of recommendation to award Bond Project proposals for RJO Intermediate Gymnasium. Is that Mr. Craig?
Yes. So these are two projects taking place this summer. So these are bids for the bleachers at RJO Intermediate School in the amount of $130,000, and also lockers at RJO. Both these projects taking place this summer, and both these projects came in well below budget.
Very good.
And will this, you said it's ready to go for the summer? As of right now, it's still on for work? Okay. Are there any questions from the Board?
I'm sorry, just one, Pam, to Mr. Craig. Albeit that schools are closed now, is building allowed to go on while students are not in the building at this time? In other words, can this be done prior?
We actually have work going on right now, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor? Whereas district architects and project managers requested Bond Project proposals for RJO Intermediate School Gymnasium renovations and corridor locker replacement per Eastern Suffolk BOSI's cooperative bid, now therefore be it resolved that the Kings Park Central School District award the following projects per the attached documentation as listed below. And I do have to say, I see Mrs. Piola, and I'm sure she's very happy seeing that done for RJO, the school that she works at. Okay, on to new business voting finance. The acceptance to add verified vendors to the new vendors to the approved district vendor list. As per district policy, all vendors must be approved by the Board before any payment can be made. I'll make a motion.
A second.
Go ahead, Diane.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, for new business voting, is the acceptance of third quarter 2019-2020 school year treasurer and claims auditor reports. Ms. Mian?
Good evening. Tonight, we have the third quarter treasurer and claims auditor report that covers January, February, and March of 2020. The treasurer's report consists of cash flows for all three months, bank reconciliations, budget status reports, revenue status reports, as well as... as well as the extracurricular monthly reports. And the claims auditor reports are all there. There were no exceptions noted in any of the months.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Resolve that the Board of Education accepts the third quarter 2019-2020 school year treasurer and claims auditor reports as listed below. Onto new business voting pupil personnel. The acceptance of PSC meeting recommendations. Dr. Colby Rooney?
Good evening, everyone. The following will include minutes from 103 Committee on Special Education meetings that were filled between the dates of January 13 through May 1.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Be resolved that the Board of Education approves the attached Individualized Educational Programs, IEPs, from January 13, 2020 to May 1, 2020. 103 in all. It's very impressive, 103, and one and a half are probably on Zoom.
Where's the point?
Great job. Okay, on to new business voting superintendent. The authorization to add the budget hearing and regular board event meeting to our school calendar as Dr. Egan just spoke about. Are there any further details, Dr. Egan, that you wanted to say?
No, just that I'm asking the board that we add an additional meeting Monday, the 18th with, you know, the projection that we'll have enough information that we can go ahead and adopt the budget and then go forward with printing the absentee ballots.
And just to let everybody know, the reason why we had to schedule this is because we have the new date for the budget vote. And with the governor's proposed cuts coming out on Friday, we want to make sure we can adopt the budget. Right? Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolve that the Board of Education will add May 18, 2020 to the budget hearing and regular board meeting to the 2019-2020 school year. Okay. Next, the vote of approval, not approval, of the Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association Proposed Budget and Officers. Dr. Egan?
All right, so this one's a little weird. And we've never done this one before, and I'll explain why. So, every spring, the Nassau Suffolk School Board holds a dinner meeting. And if you've ever been to that dinner meeting, and it's really easy to miss because usually everybody's kind of talking over it, they have a motion to accept their proposed budget and slate of officers for the following year. However, for obvious reasons, they couldn't hold that spring dinner meeting this year. So, the various school boards in Nassau and Suffolk Counties have been asked to adopt a resolution that will allow them to then adopt their budget and the slate of officers for 2021.
So, I will make a motion to approve the proposed budget. And I will make a mo- Patty, can I do both together? Okay, and I will make a motion to approve the slate of officers and the members of the executive committee to approve that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Whereas Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association has submitted its proposed 2020-2021 budget and proposed 2020-21 slate of officers and members of the executive committee. For the approval of its member boards, the Kings Park Central School District Board of Education authorizes the district clerk to record the outcome of the votes and notify Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association of the results. Be resolved that the Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association proposed budget for the 2020-21 school year as accepted by Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association Executive Committee and hereby is approved. Be it resolved that the Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association proposed 2020-2021 slate of officers and members of the executive committee as presented by the School Board Association Nominating Committee. Be and hereby is approved. On to reports from Dr. Egan.
All right, good to see everybody, literally. It's good to see people in general who don't live in the four walls that is my house. So, always a pleasure to see all of you. My office is not the most tidy place in the world, so I decided to use the turf field as my background this evening. You know, in a way, there's a tremendous amount to report, but in a way, there's also not a heck of a lot to report. You know, we have a tremendous number of decisions and rescheduling and recognitions that we're in the process of working through on the district level. I anticipate that Friday and over the weekend and Monday, we'll do a tremendous amount of work on the budget so we can bring that to the finish line. We have one exciting thing going on this coming weekend. And I want to publicly thank Sinorama of Huntington. We have a couple of district residents that are owners of Sinorama and are always incredibly generous to the school district. And they've donated a lawn sign for each member of the class of 2020. And those lawn signs will be in the ground right in front of the high school. And our seniors will be notified, and they're gonna come by and grab and go with the sign. And by 2:00 on Saturday, we anticipate that every one of our seniors will have a class of 2020 lawn sign. We also purchased this week through Sinorama a couple of huge banners that we anticipate affixing to one of our buses and using the bus to make some deliveries to students later this spring. And the banners are both a tribute to the class of 2020. And we'll figure out a way to lash them on to each side of a bus. And that'll be kind of neat as well. So, you know, our principals have worked and will continue to work hard to make sure that we can reschedule what we can to the summer. And whatever we can't reschedule, we're trying to come up with creative ways where, you know, we can give our students the recognition that they deserve. And stuff keeps coming in every week for my highlights of the week. So, if you hear of anything, just tell them to email it my way. I keep growing my highlights of the week, even though, you know, sometimes we don't have the greatest news these days. We always have great news to celebrate in Kings Park. And on a last final note, thankfully, in between the rain, I managed to get grit, G-R-I-T, on the fence over at the high school right before a sudden downpour and some thunder. And then I got home just in time to see a double rainbow last night, which is kind of unusual and a very lucky sign that perhaps better days are on their way.
Great photo.
So, that being said, that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Egan. Anybody else? Any comments?
Are you passing the microphone?
I am.
I'm gonna take it then, okay? I'd just like to congratulate and thank a number of groups and individuals in Kings Park for what they're doing for people that really are in dire need. Food, toiletries, and personal hygiene items. Kings Park Fire Department, I believe, as we said earlier, collected over a two-day period a number of goods and then gave it to the Kings Park Varsity Club. In addition, teachers from the high school, Mrs. Peola was out there when I stopped in, were collecting items in order to help these families when they do the, when they hand out food and personal effects on a Friday. In addition, one of our young ladies, 10th grader by the name of Gianna Pazuli, has collected over $1,000 on a GoFundMe page and distributed more than $1,200 in baby diapers, bottles, all kinds of things, baby-related items in the last month. She just finished it up with Mother's Day, which I thought was quite fitting. But that's, you know, that's just, you know, says a lot about the community and the individuals in our community. I know there's a lot of other good things going on, so thank you. The other one is in the form of an apology. And at times, I really believe that in the community, people think that, because many of our votes are five to nothing, that it just arrives at five to nothing. And there couldn't be anything further from the truth. And sometimes our correspondence gets very heated and can have an edge to it. And with that being said, I want to apologize to a number of people, some that are present in the room right now and some that aren't for some of my statements over the last couple of weeks. And I will make personal apologies to them, though. But it's very trying circumstances right now. People have to understand that. And for all the decisions that we make, they just don't happen. They are discussed. And as I said, sometimes emotions fly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just want to add on to that, Kevin. You've named so many people that have done such good things in Kings Park, and we always say Kings Park Pride. And I'm not sure if many people are, I'm sure there's many people aware, because there's about 1,200 people on this, Kings Park Kindness Rocks. If you're out and about taking a walk, because that's pretty much what we can do these days, there are rocks that are being left by kids. They're painted. Cute little messages, cute little pictures. It's a group you can join, and they're little messages of hope and inspiration. And they're drawn or written by the kids in our community. And I've picked up quite a few number of them. You're supposed to either pick them up and then put them back somewhere else, or just take a picture and pass it along. And the kids see their creations on this Kings Park Kindness Rocks. So, kudos to all the kids, all the parents who are helping them. It's another way of spreading kindness in Kings Park, and I just wanted to acknowledge them. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Ford, because we're in between meetings now, I hope everybody in the education community had a, you know, felt appreciated, because they really are appreciated in Kings Park on Teacher Appreciation Day. And then the following day was Nurses Appreciation Day. And God love those people for what they're doing and what they have done, whether it's a school nurse, or someone in a hospital, or somebody working in nursing care. So, appreciate both groups.
Absolutely.
And Mr. Ford, I neglected to mention one thing earlier. Today was the last day for residents to submit petitions to run for the board. We have one individual running for the board on June 9th, and that's Mr. Bianco. He's running unopposed for reelection.
Very good.
And I'll volunteer to put up lawn signs.
Thanks, Kevin. I'll put one right on your lawn.
Nobody sees on my block.
Okay.
So, Pam, just before you, just without any specific mentions, I just think some of the things you guys mentioned, I think, what it really points out is people, the neat thing about people who are able, because this has all affected us differently, but being able to take a difficult situation and embrace it and help everybody come out stronger on the other side. By look, things that you never would have thought of. Look, we talked about doing, you know, Zoom board meetings for a long time in case one of us got, you know, some of us traveled more than others, and if we didn't have enough people to run a meeting, and we never got to it. And now we've gotten to it, and it's worked. And like you said, kids taking up initiatives to help the community and residents and staff and everybody else just finding ways to take what we've been dealt and create good out of it. And that's really, that's really the challenge to everybody is wherever you can, you know, you can let this defeat you, you can just try and get through it, or you can come out stronger and better as an individual, but hopefully, most importantly, as a community. And to see those little things, they do add up. And just, you know, it's looking for everybody to do what they can. And sometimes it's going out of your comfort zone, and sometimes it's something new and different. And, you know, there's things I'm doing or seeing other people do that I never would have thought I was doing before, whether it's work or at home. And you kind of feel, once you try it, like, hey, I might keep doing this after this is over, because you know what, it really works. And, you know, it's personally rewarding, and it helps others at the same time. Like you said, whether it be a little message, whether it be reaching out to help somebody around their house or in the yard, whatever it is, you know, looking for these opportunities and recognizing them is important. So, it's good to see people taking those initiatives and taking a risk to do things that they may not be comfortable with.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I'll open it up to public comments. The Board of Education will hear additional comment, public comments. Please follow the procedures outlined for the public comment session earlier in this meeting. In addition, please note that the board will take no action at tonight's meeting. Public comments at this time. No? Okay. Okay, then I'll just go on to important dates. Some of them were mentioned by Dr. Egan. Our next meeting is Monday, May 18th, to adopt the budget and our regular board meeting at 7:30 on Zoom. Tuesday, June 2nd, is our budget hearing and regular board meeting at 7:30, again on Zoom. And on Tuesday, June 9th, the certification of budget vote and election Zoom. And that time will determine to be, determined to be announced at a later time. As you all know, just want to let you know, too, that it is, like our board meetings are posted on the website, the link to the Zoom is posted to give everyone allowance to join us. Okay. If there are no additional comments, I'm gonna make a motion to go into exec two, personnel discussion.
I can.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, I want to thank everybody for joining us. It is nice to see faces that I miss seeing, connecting with people. Thank you, everybody, for continuing to do what you're doing.
Pam, I just want to know what Rick is gonna launch out of that place.
Yeah.
That's my ham shack behind me, Joe.
That looks, that looks pretty high-tech in there.
It is. You can talk all around the world from here.
You probably haven't noticed that anything's different.
No. Good night, all.
Good night. Thank you, everybody. Stay safe.
Night, everyone.
Good night.
All right, thanks.